I'd like to call the June 17th meeting of the Sonora City Council to order. Uh, Mr. Miller, would you like to lead us in the questions?
I'd like to lead. I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, rock ball.
Yes, Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Plummer.
Here.
Councilmember Sutch.
Here.
Councilmember Williams is absent and Mayor Garbenta.
Here.
Administrative Services Director.
Here.
Community Development Director.
Here.
Fire Chief.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
And the City Attorney and City Administrator are present. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Okay. Item B, City Clerks' Report on the Agenda Posting.
Uh, it would be at 3:30 on the 13th of June.
Okay, item C is Approval of the Agenda. Is there any additions, corrections?
May I just make a statement?
Do you have something relevant to the approval agenda?
Agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to thank you, Tim, for getting the agenda out on Thursday and also thank city staff that that may have affected, made me very happy.
Glad to know you're still happy.
I'm still happy.
Okay, well, do your best to try and keep that scheduled.
That's all I have to say.
Okay. Since our person for the presentation, item D, is not here yet, I would like to kind of postpone that throughout the meeting until she does show. If that's okay with everybody else, then continue on with the rest of the agenda. Okay? So that means item E is Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within its jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent leading agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. So anyone like to speak on public comment? Okay, seen none, I will go to item F, Consent Calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless the council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Item's our number one, Approval of the following meeting minutes. That's A, City Council Open Session Meeting of May 6, 2019. Item two is Approval to Pay Invoices of Previously Budgeted Expenses on June 18, 2019. And three, Approval of Disbursements in the amount of $135,547.32 on June 7, 2019 for payroll inclusive of employee salaries, employer and employee taxes, and retiree contributions, miscellaneous voluntary employment provisions. Is there anyone like to speak on public comment on the consent calendar? Seen none, I'll bring it back to the council.
Moved through second.
It's been moved by Mayor Potem Hawkins and second by Councilmember Plummer to approve consent calendar. Um, any further questions or any further comments? None? I'll call for a question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Passed unanimously. Okay, we'll go to item D, Presentation, Certificate of Appreciation for Rotary Club of Sonoras, Diana Quigby. Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you. Certainly my pleasure to provide some information as to why we're recognizing Sonora Rotary Club. They were a great partner in undertaking some work at Woods Creek Rotary Park. They provided funding that allowed us to purchase materials to fix the bleachers, recondition the ball field, Diamond. Jointly, the barbecues were cleaned and they took on re-spraying them. They did some work with us on the restroom facilities, including, we did some facial replacement, they took care of the painting, and then also provided some supplies for painting the interior of the restrooms themselves, the restroom storage building at Woods Creek Park. I had the opportunity to talk to the club over the past year about activities that could, we could undertake out there that were within the capabilities of the club and needs that we had within the department. And once we had a couple of meetings, they were working through our Public Works Department and managed to complete all those activities. So with that, I certainly support the certificate of recognition. It's nice when we can partner with organizations within the city and address the needs of the community.
Okay. And looking for, I guess I could look for a motion to approve the, do any of them do a motion? I'm serious, they can't do all their motions on this. Um, so Diane, would you like to come up to the podium?
Yes.
Want to present to you the certificate of recognition. This certificate is awarded to the Rotary Club of Sonora for their assistance in providing labor and materials for repairs at Woods Creek Rotary Park. Presented by the council on June 17, 2019.
Thank you.
Can I get my phone so we can take a picture so I can show the club? Is that okay?
Sure.
Is that permissible?
Yes.
Sure.
We're gonna have to have someone take a picture.
Thank you.
I'm pretty much fully illiterate, so.
That's actually too good.
I don't take pictures.
Thank you.
I can make my word.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank Tim Miller and Mike Laco Marzino, the manager of Public Works, was really easy to work with. We were out there about, I brought down the average age of our club members. We had one age of 87, who was stern and stopful, who has been with Rotary for 52 years, who was out there painting with us one day, the interior and the fixation that was replaced by the city. So, thank you so much and look forward to doing more projects with you in the future.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, item G is Unfinished Business, there is none. Item H is Public Hearings, there are none. Item I is New Business. Number one is Consideration to Approve a Special Event Permit for the Sonora Tap Room, 1 Leonardburg Street, for a summer kickoff event on June 22, 2019, between the hours of 7:00 and 10:00 P.M. Mr. Miller.
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, here's to the council. As we, as you have seen before, we have a second request this year. And this is what I think we either second or third annual summer kickoff event utilizing Leonardburg Street this coming Saturday. The hours are similar to both for the closure and the activities as to what's happened in the past. And staff is recommending your approval with the same conditions that you've seen before. So with that, we have to respond to any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Miller, to room Sutch?
I would really love to see on this application more under the additional rules and regulations. Number seven, applicant must notify affected businesses or residents of street closures at least five days prior to the event. I would like somewhere on this application for them, for the applicant to write who they plan to contact.
Okay, based on comments from the staff, I do know they've talked to Mr. Williams, the Diamond Back, and the binnies, I think, restaurant back behind the store, so, are back behind the street. Some information I have gotten from our special events coordinator.
And they already did contact.
Yes.
Any other questions for, any other questions? Okay, open up for public comment. So anyone like to speak on the side?
So my name is John Williams and I own Mountain Home Gifts, which borders Leonardburg. And yes, in fact, both people from the city and the owners of the taproom have contacted me about this event, so I'm really pleased with that improvement. It would be nice if it was kind of codified, written out, because it does affect other businesses. I'm still a little bewildered, because they want music at 7:00 o'clock, I'm open until 7:30. I'm still a little bewildered that they want an event to start at 7:00 when it's fairly warm there. But I very much appreciate the city letting me know that on that day, there'll be music, which will in fact affect my business. So I'm really impressed they did contact me. Thank you.
Thanks.
John, just, my question.
Okay.
So, we were, we were, Naylin indicated she'd talk to you. We were going to set the hours later and we had the understanding that you guys were gonna work out the start of the music and.
I told her I'm open till 7:30. I don't particularly find it easy to talk to customers at my cash register when the music's playing. Everybody seemed to want to push it to 7:00 o'clock.
So I, on that basis, I'd recommend, I'd change our recommendation that it starts no sooner than 7:30.
Yeah, but thanks for.
Anybody else like to speak on this item? Okay, seen none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and for a motion. Councilor Sutch.
I just can't read the writing on page four on the city approval.
Yeah, I was kind of looking at that. On page.
Covers all electrical and then come on trip.
Trip hazards and. Oh. Oh, oh, it's a field fire extinguisher, 2A, 10 B.C.
Oh, so, that's from the police chief. They do an inspection to make sure there's fire extinguishers there, make sure that cords, any cords that come across where public would walk, they have to tie down or have the plates over them. Will do an inspection before they're, as I said.
It just would be nice if we could read these things without trying to figure it out.
Uh, I will ask if they can practice their handwriting.
Coming from me, that's actually sort of rude, but.
That's a cover all electrical.
Yeah.
Trip hazards and extinguishers. Any other session? Okay. This is your vote.
Well, maybe it's, maybe it's 7:30 for the start of the music would be appropriate since they didn't get a lookout previously.
You can't hear.
I'm sorry about that. Ready for motion, I guess I'll make a motion.
Um, it also needs to go to 10:30, Diane?
Yes. Yeah, extend it to 10:30. I'm sorry I didn't hear you.
And he's been extended to 10:30.
So, since there's an hour between the event ending and the event, the street closure, I mean, we should allow the street closure to go to 10:00, 11:00, 30:00 as well? Instead of giving them a half hour?
We'll work that out with you. More concerned about when the music plays.
So, I wouldn't give authorization to go up to and then, you know, to come back for any false action. Okay. So whoever's gonna make the motion should make that as part of the motion. So that was starting music not to start before 7:30 and extending the hours up to 11:30 then.
For the cleanup.
For the cleanup.
That means 10, 10 D.C.
Excuse me, 10:30. Okay, I'll make a motion for approval with music start before 7:30 and being extended up to 10:30 with up to 11:30 for cleanup. Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Plummer and second by Council, uh, Mayor Potem Hawkins to, with, to allow the request with the aforementioned summer kickoff. Amendments? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Can you oppose? Passed unanimously. Item number two is Consideration of Doc Resolution Number 06-17-2019-A, Approval in the Fiscal Year 2019-20, Operating Budget. This is Administrative Services Director, Dorsky.
Aye.
Good evening. Um, so we are recommending that we approve the 2019-20 operating budget. Um, it is a balanced budget, there's no significant changes in services. It has 48.2 FTEs, basically the same as last year. Um, it's the same as what was presented on June 3rd. And certainly, are any questions?
No, and there's no changes from when we were. No changes. Any questions for Mr. Dorsky?
It's a letter.
No, you can go.
I was just gonna make a couple things, you know, so it's, it's, hopefully makes it in our newspaper. It's, what, 8.7 million?
Yeah, 8.8, basically.
8.8, almost 8.8 million. It is balanced, correct?
That's correct.
Um, we have cut no one, correct?
That's correct. Same staffing levels.
So we have maintained the same staffing levels, maintain a balanced budget, and we are a fairly, fairly poor city when you, when you do the outlook on other cities, spending per capita and that sort of thing. So we have a city of less than 5,000 people that has a balanced budget that maintain our staffing levels.
Those are all true, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make that very public because I know that the county is going through some issues and we, we have cut no one.
It was, um, the department heads were very vigilant in keeping expenditures, you know, the same as last year. Um, the only thing this incorporates is necessary changes in staffing. Uh, there's insurance costs, um, PERS costs, those type of things. Otherwise, it's basically a status quo budget.
And then also in this budget is the expenditures for the bathrooms that are gonna be going by the.
Yes, the farmer's farm.
Okay, so that will be done from this budget?
Yeah, that was actually originally budgeted last year and it's been deferred into this 2020 budget.
Okay, great.
Um, I have a question about the bathrooms. There's $200,000 that's carried over from Lester's budget.
Yes.
That doesn't come close to correct, to fixing those bathrooms, does it? Do we have like a plan for that?
There's a, there is a architectural drawings, there's an architectural, or there's an engineered, I'll say engineered. There's a net, a project cost estimate. There is some unknown work that might relate to needing to replace the roof once we get the inside demolished. So there could be some additional costs, and if there are, we'll come back to the council, ask for authorization from our reserve account to cover those additional costs. I'm still waiting on one more demo bid, if you will, but I have one yet. And as soon as we get the second bid in, we'll have someone start on the interior demolition that needs to be done. It's work we can't do because of some hazardous material. So, that should, that should be happening in the next couple of weeks.
So it's your belief that as long as the roof doesn't need repair, that this will come in under 200,000?
I can't, I can't guarantee that until we get the bids. I mean, construction costs are going up and continue to go up. And, and, and a project like this, there are a lot of unknowns, but, but we'll, you know, there's, there's enough in the reserves to cover additional costs to get that project done. But that'll, that'll, will require coming back to the council if it's a significant amount of money.
Um, okay. Um, I also have a question about Public Works. Is there any way we could do some sort of an internship program with Public Works to get summer staffing there for not much money? I just feel like Public Works is always funded. The city ship looks like it.
We can look into that.
Um, the college actually has a program that they might be able to pick up a lot of the cost of employee and I, I would really like to see Public Works funded a little, a little more. There's, there's a lot that hasn't been repaired up there. And, that's it.
So, what program do you, do you, do you collaborate with colleges?
Well, they're just.
Do you have any work experience with them?
Um, it's, they're just creating it, but, but do you really want all this detail? It's, they're, they have a, the dorms are 75, can be 75% full. So they're working on a program to bring students to the dorms, um, but, and, and they have to be in good academic standing, they have to go to college full-time. Um, and they have to work and, and they'll do like internships or apprenticeship programs and that they will pay a lot of the salary. So, I would really like to see that directed to Public Works as a priority for the city. That's it.
All right, any other questions about the budget? Uh, is there any public comment on the budget? Seen none, I'll bring it back to the councils or.
Before you take, let me just add just some brief comments, just to build on what Chris has said. The, and one thing I'd like to talk about is the city reserves. As of April, and you have this report, our reserves were something over $2.5 million. That number fluctuates because we get our sales tax monies and we get our property tax monies on a cycle. It can be higher in the next month, because it's, it's really our, it's our checking account, if you will. Um, but it is used to cover other funds that are deficient, and you see that on the reports. And right now, our benefit zone B, which is part of what supports the downtown activities, has a deficit of almost $96,000. I'll talk a little bit more about Zone B in a minute, Zone A and B in a minute. And the other thing that our general fund reserves do is advance money for projects and activities and grants and programs that, that we get paid back for. So it's, um, the reserves use to fund those where we, where we ultimately get reimbursed. But when you take all that out of what our current balance is, um, the unencumbered amount is, is still at $2.2 million. When I started back in 2011, um, the general fund reserve was something like eight, almost $900,000. And there was an over $500,000 deficit. And the available funds that summer were about $300,000. So over the years, through the efforts of the staff and the council and management, we've been able to build up the reserves. And that's created the opportunity for us to use some of that money for deferred maintenance on any number of different buildings and some of these other projects that we've taken on in the last two and three years. But we should maintain a reserve that's at least a million and a half, if not closer to $2 million on, as a, as an appropriate level. The, um, the other thing I'd like to just briefly talk about is, since there's been some comments in the paper and some other areas, about special programs and special events. It's something the council may want to take a look at and may want to engage the merchants about. The, um, there's two funding sources for those activities, and it's Zone A, which is the downtown business, businesses that pay a supplemental fee. And then Zone B, which is the rest of the businesses in town that pay a $25 flat rate fee per business license. And, and between the two, the Zone A generates about $17,000, the other generates about $30,000. Our expenses in this year's budget for the activities and a, and a shared cost of our special programs administrator is about $53,000 with about $38,000 revenue. So, we're gonna see another deficit this year of about $15,000 and that'll add to the existing deficit that we already have. And that's made up out of the, out of the general fund and, and to which the bus, the total business license fees go. But, but there is a, there is a cost in, in all of those programs. The, um, the other thing these numbers don't reflect are all the other staff time that go into all the special events. All the police officers that work when we do the parades, all the public works crews that are putting on, getting set up for the activities and cleaning up after the activities. We don't charge my time, the rest of the community development department, we don't charge any of that staff time against those special event activities. Because if we did, it would be in the tens of thousands of dollars. And that's our, our, the city's commitment, additional commitment to those downtown activities and programs. So just so you understand, when you look at the budget, what those, what those numbers are and what, what those deficits might be. The other thing that has led us or allowed us to maintain a balanced budget, and, and the college comments allude to it. Our Public Works Department has three fewer people than it did when I started. We have one less department director than when I started. We have contract positions instead of full-time positions. There's been no growth, if you will, in any department staffing. And, and we've also absorbed additional personnel costs when certain grants that were funding positions have now gone away. That's happened in the police department, it's happened in community development. So we've had to, to maintain staffing, absorb those costs within the budget that we have. So, it's not gonna get any easier in future years, but you just need to be aware of, of kind of, of what we do to keep things going and to keep the budget balanced. The, um, it's a, it's a, it's a challenge that the staff's been able to manage, but you need to understand, you know, the challenges that the city's facing. That coupled with what Chris mentioned is increasing healthcare costs, and the slight increase in some cost of living adjustments for employees. Our ever-increasing PERS costs are gonna, gonna continue to impact future years' budgets. So, I guess this is somewhat a before warning that while we, while we're doing okay this year, we've got good reserves. It's gonna continue to be a challenge for the city to maintain the current staffing, the current level of services with the demands that we're gonna be seeing in the future. So, I think I mentioned the last time, it's, it's time that we probably get with our finance committee and start talking about these subjects in preparation now for next year. So, don't wanna, don't wanna throw cold water on a good, on a, really a good, a good budget and a, and a good recommendation and a, but it's just, we need to be vigilant. And it's time to start being vigilant, because we don't want to end up like some of our partner agencies.
Any comments?
I know those chowpers beat us up pretty bad, it's, it's only getting worse.
No, I'm, right now, basically, all of our departments are running about as lean as we believe they can. So, my understanding that it's growth in revenue is the only, the only satisfactory out without dramatically cutting some part of our public service, correct?
I don't, I don't want to make assumptions or predictions, I think it's, it's time to start looking at all of that.
Thank you very much for the good work on this budget. Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Mr. Dorsky and all of our staff.
Well, this is always, always wonderful and I've been blessed here with always having, I think, a buddy in the black and a friend in the white. Thank you.
Um, we don't have a building inspector?
Yes, we do.
Contract.
It's a contract position.
Oh, it's a contract. And I know this is obnoxious, but I just had there a couple typos.
Sorry.
Page 41. Under Improved Disaster Emergency Credit. Under improve disaster emergency readiness, seven to the last line, it says this included heart line cellular upgrades to, uh, it's to be two hour and it says tour from system.
Which, which, uh, subject?
Um, improve disaster emergency readiness.
Fourth one down.
Second to the last.
Okay.
Um, and then on page fifty, um, the very last sentence, the program has ending, I think it means is ending?
Has ended.
Oh, ended, sorry. And that's it.
At least we know somebody reads it. Oh. Cover many pages, it isn't this year.
I read the whole thing over again, potentially, because I didn't know it wasn't gonna be different.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Then I would be looking for a motion.
A motion to approve the budget passed, please.
I'll second.
Improve the resolution.
Oh, resolution, sorry. I should never do this. I never know what to do.
Is that with the changes that you made?
The changes. Where's the resolution?
Uh, it's six seventeen, two zero one nine A. It's right behind the staff. It's the backside of the staff report.
You can just say as approved, as, um, agendized with the changes.
I approve the resolution as agendized with changes.
That you mentioned.
Right.
That you mentioned.
That I mentioned.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved by council member Satch, it's seconded by council member Plumber to approve and adopt a minimum resolution. Um, is there any further discussion? Now I'll call for a question. All who favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seen none. Passes unanimously. I just realized that I didn't, uh, report out of closed session at the beginning of the meeting, so I'll do that now and announce that no action was taken at that meeting, that I didn't do that like I was supposed to. Item number three, consideration, uh, to adopt resolution number, uh, oh six dash seventeen dash two thousand nineteen dash B approving updated user fees and service charges for the fire department. Chief Newt?
Yes, City Mayor, Council members, members of the public. Um, for you tonight is resolution zero six one seven two zero one nine B. And this is to revise the fire department user fees and service charges. Um, the background on this, the last time reviews were updated was in December of two thousand fifteen. And the need to make these changes was when, um, SB twelve oh five passed and, uh, took effect into January. I was notified probably about March. Um, and that is now requiring the business inspections, specific business inspections from the state fire marshal's office, that they are now mandated annually. Where before, we were having all of our businesses on rotating three to five year plan, uh, which is allowed by the state fire marshal's office, because we just don't have the staffing to get to every single business, um, as the fire code requires. But there are certain individual businesses and business types that they are now mandating regardless, that we have to inspect every year. So that prompted the need to update our user fees and service charges. Um, those, uh, occupancy types are daycares, hospitals, uh, residential complexes that are a triplex or larger, so apartment complexes, detention centers, healthcare facilities, um, and a few others. So, uh, educations are all the schools. So everything, uh, those are now mandated to be done on an annual basis. So, um, what I did was prepare, I talked to a county staff at their fire prevention bureau to make sure that the increases in our fees and the cleanup of our fee schedule was in line with theirs or less than theirs. Um, and basically all of the fees that I did discuss with them, the city's fees are a little bit than the county's at this time. So I did make a few adjustments. Um, one I did wanna mention on the, the previous number two through five, that is lined out on the actual fee codes, um, operational permits are in the fire code under section one oh five six. There's a list of about twenty-five to thirty different operational permits. Our previous fees and user schedule only had five listed, so I figured it'd be easier just to, um, those out and list that the ones that are located in that code would be an annual fee. Um, the other items I adjusted, um, to fall in line more with what the county was charging and charge for additional inspections, because right now, if we go out on a small project, typically only one inspection is required, but some of the larger projects, we're, we're finding ourselves going out five, ten, fifteen times and not being able to recoup that cost. So the fire sprinkler plan, uh, reviews and life safety inspections would allow for the review in one inspection. Then each additional, we'd be able to charge for, recoup the actual cost of allowing to do an additional inspection. Um, real quick too, on item eleven, that's the new section, that's the residential inspections and the other occupancies. We broke those down, um, to be fair by the amount of time and what other agencies were doing, uh, for the inspections and trying to encompass as many as we could for smaller, uh, residential owners that have triflexes or apartment complexes, uh, charging a minimal fee to recoup, we figured zero to twenty-five units would approximately take about an hour, maybe a little over. Um, so we charged those in accordance to how many units they had and the time it would take us to actually do the inspection. The other occupancies, uh, we decided the, the best way, uh, and this was a recommendation from the state fire marshal, was to go by square footage. So that way we're charging the least amount to a smaller business owner and of course it takes longer, the bigger the ability to do the inspection. So the fees would go up in accordance to that. And then I'd be happy to answer any other questions. I did note that some of the strikes, like on number three, the fire sprinkler plan review.
That's right.
The strike actually goes through the four, but it goes through the center line. So it still looks like it's three thousand six hundred and forty and it's three sixty.
Three hundred and sixty, yeah.
Yeah. And I think that happened also. Yeah, so it should be three hundred and sixty. It was previously three forty. Um, and number, like a number eleven, it looks like it's one one four, um, for permit to allow, um, that reinspection to strike out. But the four, again, the strike out went right through the middle of the four, so it doesn't look like it's, it's part of the deletion.
Okay.
So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for staff?
What goes into a fires, uh, fire sprinkler plan review?
So depending on the scope of the, the practice with the fire sprinkler plan review, a lot of times we'll send them out for review because it takes a program and, uh, water calculations. It's based on very extensive software that, um, currently we do not have. Um, so the charges on here are in-house inspections that I would be able to do without the calculations, changes to a existing sprinkler system. Um, and basically what we're looking at is that all the sprinkler heads, like you see above you there, there are certain, certain spacing that they have to have to make sure that the coverage is going to cover everything, the building, uh, the pressures on the, uh, existing system are correct, uh, to allow for additional or, uh, removal of the sprinkler heads if the project is gonna change that, um, especially if it's an addition, they're gonna be adding on sprinklers. So if it's a few, we can make the calculation, um, but if it's a, a new project, we typically send that out. Um, we're also checking that the equipment has been serviced annually, whereas would, um, in the field is a five-year inspection. So we make sure that all the piping, plumbing is cleaned out and everything's working properly and the bell sounds when it rings.
Thank you for helping me, um, understanding this. And it's a lot less onerous than I first thought. Aside from you is qualified now that we no longer have a fire inspector. So who can go out and do these inspections?
So it falls under, uh, the California fire code of the fire chief or his or her designate. So I can designate the engine companies to help out with the inspections. Uh, but mainly right now it's myself, uh, doing most of the inspections with the engine company, um, for the banding ones. The engine companies are assisting with the annual business inspections, completely yours.
Thank you.
Steve, uh, on standby fees, do we have figures before or these are new figures, newly established?
No, those are ones we had before.
Okay.
That hasn't changed.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. I'll open up for public discussion. Anyone like to speak on this item? John's shaking his head. Um, I'll bring it back to the council for, uh, discussion and our motion.
I'll move that we adopt, uh, resolution number six seventeen twenty nineteen B, uh, approving updated user fees and service charges for the fire department.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved by council member Hawkins and seconded by council member Plumber, uh, to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for the question. All who favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seen none. Passes unanimously. Item number four is consideration to adopt updated daily rental fees for the opera hall. Community Development Director Plumber.
Thank you. Um, so as with baby's fees, these fees have been around for a while as you guys saw from my report. Um, in two thousand four, we did the expansion project at the opera hall where we added the back prep kitchen and the larger restrooms and storage facilities. At that same time, in two thousand six, we updated the fees just when we finished that project. Um, so the fees that are there now have been in existence since September eighteenth of two thousand six. Um, I listed for you the current daily rental fee for the hall, uh, Monday through Thursday, it's a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, the daily rental Friday, Saturday, Friday through Sunday and holidays is two fifty per day. And then we do some bundling, um, basically on the weekends, if they bundle it, they can get it for two hundred dollars a day. We do have a fee for the prep kiln kitchen. That is a one-time fee. So no matter how many days they rent it, it's one fee. So basically we open the door and they have it for a hundred dollars during their rental. Um, the piano is a hundred and seventy-five dollars, but that's to, every time the piano is used, somebody checks it before and tunes it for them and then they come back and make sure there's no damage to the piano. And that's what the fee is for. Um, sound systems are, are again, one-time fee for the rentals. Um, and then our cleaning and damage deposit of three hundred dollars is a one-time fee. And then as long as everything's fine, um, they get that and it goes back to them. Uh, and examining similar facilities, um, as I said in my staff report, depending on the facility, most daily rents are between four fifty to five hundred and ten, ten dollars per day. Um, some of those though include red cleaning or setup, um, some do not. Some are like we, our opera hall. Um, the weekday rentals range from a hundred and fifty to five ten. Some of the facilities give no break for weekdays. Um, I think there was only a couple of them that actually have a lesser rate during the week. And then, um, the kitchen rentals were from one twenty-five to two fifty. Um, for, uh, the kitchens were at a per day rate. They weren't like ours, which is a one-time rate. But keep in mind, most of the kitchen, kitchen facilities for these, they have stoves and, and actually kitchen facilities and we don't. We call ours a prep chill.
We don't have a commercial kitchen.
No, we just have a prep kitchen. Um, and that's why we set the fee lower at the time. Um, it can be rented, the opera hall can be rented eighteen months out. We're, um, pretty well booked through the end of this, um, annual year. Um, so any fees that go into effect are, are gonna fix people about six months out from now. That, and it would only be effective to, it only would go, affect the people that haven't booked yet. If they've already booked, they're, they'd be under the same fees that they originally booked the hall in. Um, and what we're recommending is that we increase the Monday through Thursday daily rental to two fifty, um, and then two hundred dollars for consecutive day rentals. And then the daily rental for Friday through Sunday and holidays go to three fifty, um, and three hundred dollars a day for consecutive day rentals. So again, they get a fifty dollar a day break if they rent it for more than one day. And we're increasing both of the rental fees by a hundred dollars per day. The hall's really booked, it's well used and it's used, a lot of out-of-towners come up and have their weddings and stuff there as well. So, because it's very reasonable. So, that's all I have for you.
Okay.
Why don't, why do we only have a prep kitchen? Why don't we have a stove? Just curious.
At the time it was designed, it was designed that way. Um, and it was designed that way mainly, um, because of the fact that people can go in there on a Friday and somebody from the, it wouldn't be checked till a Monday. There was a concern about safety if something was to get left on. We don't have twenty-four hour staffing like most of the facilities do where they have somebody going right in. Um, we don't have anybody going in until it's time to check the, after an event.
Um, I just wanna say I was there this weekend. The Hornish group was there, which I'm not a part of, but I had some friends there and whoever they worked with, with the city was great.
That, they, Kim actually is the one that checked him and checked him out because Sheila was off.
They loved her.
All good.
Just, I'll, I'll tell Kim.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, any other questions for staff? Seen none. Um, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seen none. I'll bring it back to the council.
So I'll give my two cents here. The opera hall, it's good to see that this, for years it wasn't used near as much as it is now. Honestly, part of me credits the historic chamber for doing that, getting more people in, doing things. I think some churches have been using it too, basically, which is great. It's a community building, it needs to be used. I, I, I get the diff, the different fees and things not going, are not going up since oh six, yeah, September eighteenth, oh six. I think that the, uh, in my humble opinion, I think that the proposed rental fee, uh, goes up too much too quick. That's, that's my opinion, a hundred bucks. There's, I, I think as part of the draw, yes, it's definitely cheaper than most places, but you still have to bring things in, get things going, that sort of thing. So I don't mind if, if we go up fifty bucks for a proposed rental fee and then maybe in a year or two, we take a look at it. I still feel that, uh, going up a hundred bucks is too much.
Landlord's per se, uh, perpetual dilemma, isn't it? You do it a little bit at a time.
Regularly. I always present raising fees, uh, but I'm gonna support this because I think it's due. And we can always take it back down if we find that it just is no longer full. That was one of the big, one of them. A few questions I have, you answered it. And if it's full right now, then the fairest way to decide who gets to use it is let the market decide. So if it empties out, we can always lower it fifty bucks.
I don't know. I, I think this is a pretty reasonable.
I would only point out that, um, in our, in our fund balances, uh, we're showing about a five thousand dollar deficit in the opera hall account.
Right.
And, and I don't recall, Michelle, but we did a substantial amount of, um, work on the building down there. And I think that one came out of reserves, right?
It did.
So we're not, we're not, I mean, we're absorbing all of the maintenance costs, all of it, other than just the day-to-day operations and cleaning and that stuff. All of the other maintenance costs is coming out of the city budget and we're not recovering out of rental structure. So, but I do agree, it's a community building. We don't wanna be, be excessive about these increases, but it's, I think this is warranted and it, and obviously we're, we're, current budget shows it balanced for this year, but, but we've accumulated a deficit years past.
And how much will this change? Uh, what's it projected to do for this deficit of five thousand?
Well, we only have six months. It takes fifty, it's gonna take fifty days of rental, fifty days of rental at a higher rate to make up five thousand dollars. And I don't know that there's fifty days of rental in a six-month period.
The next year, we'll start picking everybody.
But it'll get closer.
And there are things that we still need to do. We need to do something about the front doors. They do a lot shrinking and swelling. And so we put off some things and there's things coming up that we'll need to get done. This year, we're painting the hallway, the stage, and we're resealing the kitchen floors. That's in the budget. Um, we do an annual maintenance on the carpet floors. Um, we had to do a swamp cooler last year. It's just, it's, it's a landlord thing and, and I charge no time against it. If Kim goes down and covers for Sheila, she doesn't charge time against it. Public Works doesn't charge time against it. So we are definitely running the deficit, because if everybody charged when they were down there, it'd be even worse.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seen none, I'll ask if anyone has a motion?
I'd like to make the motion. I'd like to approve the proposed rental fees as stated by staff.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Satch and seconded by Councilmember Plummer to adopt the updated daily rental fees for the Opera Hall. Is there any further discussion?
I still feel it's too much too soon, but that's my opinion.
All right. There's no other discussion, and I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, passes three to one with Mayor Pro Tim Hawkins voting no, and Councilmember Williams absent. Item... Oh, hello. Item, the second four, really number five, consideration to authorize the city administrator to enter into agreement with Chaven Concepts Incorporated to conduct interviews and hold meetings to prepare a filings report to guide the council and community in preparation for Economic Development Action Plan. Just moving.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Even though we're not done with all of the wind-down activities with the current Palm County Economic Development Authority, it's certainly time to start looking at what we want to do for our future. And we have included in the budget the same amount of money that we have in the past when we funded, as we funded the TCEDA. It's just over a hundred thousand dollars. We anticipate that there's some unfunded retirement liability there that we need to pay on a going-forward basis, but still leaves three-quarters of that money available for economic development activities. The city has documents that exist that talk about economic development, and it includes our general plan, as well as the Vision Sonora Plan, and a variety of different things that policies, goals, and objectives within those documents. It's time that we should probably revisit those documents, and it's certainly time to rebuild with the community what the city thinks our economic activities should be, our interests are goals, what we should try and achieve. And so, with that in mind, I reached out to a consultant I worked with before, a number of years ago, while the county economic development plans were being developed for Merced County and all of its six cities, and it's often tailored from Chaven Concepts. And they still provide services to Los Banos and Atwater. Let's see, Los Banos and the city of Merced, both as a kind of an all-call staff person and as a resource. It's a firm with thirty years' experience and a lot of contacts in the industry and a lot of references. So, in talking with her over the past several weeks, certainly shared information about the current TCEDA, the issues that have been brought up, shared links to the newspaper articles and the grand jury reports. So, she has an understanding of the situation as she comes into it. But we felt it would be best to start with what the business interests are, what the community needs are, what the council's comments might be, and do that through, starting with an interview process with all the stakeholders, not all, with a select group of stakeholders, to kind of frame the conversation. From that, then identify what the issues and interests are and have a workshop or... Let's see, what was the word that we were using? Anyway, have a kind of a forum, and then out of that, bring to the council a consensus of where we should go and how we should get there, that ultimately then will lead to some economic development initiatives or some type of action plan. And that's a phase-two part of the process. But the approach would be to start from the ground level or grassroots level, however you want to characterize it, and build up to what we want to, what we think we can do instead of having someone who's an expert come in and say, "Here's what's best for you." I think we need to build trust and build support and reengage the community, and this is a process that we came up with as a way to try to do that. It's something we can do over the next couple of months. The cost is fairly reasonable. It's up to seven-five-hundred dollars. And I think it's having someone who's not from the area but is familiar with communities like ours, but doesn't come in with an agenda or a preconceived ideas is the right type of person to bring in. So, it's my recommendation that you authorize me to enter into agreement with Chaven Concepts for a not-to-exceed contract of seven-five-hundred dollars.
Questions? Go ahead.
Seven-five-hundred dollars of travel.
I think so. We'll work that out in the agreement.
I just... I just didn't want you to come up short.
Yeah. Conversations were that some of this work she'll do as she works with some of the other agencies down in the valley, try and schedule things around that process.
And you said that she did work in Los Banos and Merced?
It still is.
Okay. The interview process with stakeholders, can the council be part?
I would... Yeah, we would like to get names from the council, but not participate in the actual interviews with them. And then there'll be a roundtable with the stakeholders, but bring that to the... Bring that to their council. But the council will hopefully be part of that interview process.
Right there? Yeah, right there. Okay. All right, then I will open up to public comment. Anyone like to speak on this item?
I heard about this idea a couple of days ago, and I think it's a very good idea. And I like the idea of a one-time expense from people who have good experience in economic development as to, you know, again, hiring another person with month-after-month costs. I really like that idea, and I think this is a really positive thing for the city. I had a chance to look at their website, and it was mentioned that clients of theirs are City of Merced, City of Los Banos, very similar kind of cities. They have historic downtowns, but they also have large strip mall, big box areas, retailer areas outside of the historic area. I also noticed today, went back to the website, they also have the City of Moro Bay, a city with a historic downtown that is, you know, dependent on tourist dollars, much like us. So, I'm actually excited about this idea, and I encourage you to consider it. I think it's a positive thing for the city of Moro. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Williams? Anyone else like to speak on this item? Seen none, I'll bring you back to the council for discussion and our motion.
Well, I think with everything going on with the JPA, the Economic Development Authority JPA, you know, so much public trust was lost through that whole situation. And I know each of us have felt it up here, getting the phone calls or the emails, and I think starting off slow and starting off very transparent is the best way to go. With seven-five-hundred dollars, it's not like we're throwing money in a situation, and that situation's a giant hole, and the money keeps going. So, there's a point where we can stop if we don't like the results. You know, the public needs to know, and I'm sure this is probably what the rest of the council is thinking too, economic development is never forgotten about by any means from the city. It's just that we really wanted to take another calculated approach instead of just going along and doing, you know, not being transparent or not appearing to be transparent. I'm speaking of the county issue right now, but what people called me about, thinking it was a backdoor deal or something going on, and the city can't operate that way. We just can't. So, I'm happy to see this, and Mr. Williams, I appreciate your support on this.
I support the... The vote for you, yes. But I think one of the things that we're going to... The essential question is, what do we want economic development for the city to actually accomplish? Is it to raise revenue for the city, which would be helpful? Is it to make it a more attractive, nicer place to live? I mean, a mix of this? This is... The proposal here has five questions, and they were, where are we now? How will we get there? But we really need, and I think this is something that needs more public input than one person. Thank you very much for coming, John. This is a pretty important subject. Unfortunately, I suppose, the level of distrust and cynicism is so high that nobody's interested or else anybody's business is over-stuck. Back to my point, though, we need to decide what we want it to accomplish, and that's what we'll measure. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jim.
I have something, but I can't move on.
Well, I do like this concept because it goes out and asks the stakeholders directly and find... Will help us develop that plan, I think, that you're looking for, Mark. This is definitely more of a, let's ask people what these five questions rather than being told what those five questions, the answers to those five questions from a position of whatever. So, I wholeheartedly agree that this is the approach that we need to go and follow at this point. There's not any further discussion or collecting, unless you collect, you remember what you meant saying?
No, I'll remember at three a.m.
Call me, I'll probably be up.
In that case, I will move to authorize our city administrator to, in agreement with Chaven Concepts Inc. Do you agree with the rest of the panel?
I'll second it.
Okay, so it's been moved by Councilmember Plummer and seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Hawkins to authorize the city administrator to enter into agreement with Chaven Concepts. Any further discussion? Not a call for question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seen none. Passes unanimously. Thanks for coming, John. Item number six is consideration to adopt Resolution Number Zero-Six-Dash-Seventeen-Dash-Two-Thousand-Nineteen-Dash-C, reconfirming the city's previous adoption of the Palm County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and City of Sonora Annex A. Mr. Williams?
Yes, this is just a cleanup item of a previous action. It was a latter part of, I guess it was December two thousand and seventeen, when the original resolution was adopted. Through eighteen, the plan was submitted, it was reviewed, there were some changes required. We've just gotten word within the last month or so that both the Cal OES and FEMA are ready to approve it with the modifications that were in there, so they've asked for readoption of the resolution, and we would ask you to adopt Resolution Six Seventeen Twenty-Nineteen-C, which is... But for the date and the names that sign is the same as what was presented to you last night. And I referenced in my report, copies of the document, as well as the annex are at City Hall.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay, seen none, I'll ask for any public comment. Seen none, I'll bring you back to the council for discussion and our motion.
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number Six Seventeen Twenty-Nineteen-C, reconfirming the city's previous adoption of the Palm County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan and City of Sonora Annex A.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Hawkins and seconded by Councilmember Plummer to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion? Not a call for question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seen none. Passes unanimously. Item J is monthly reports. We have staff, written staff reports from the Community Development Department, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the Public Works Department. See any comment on those? I'll go to item K is the agenda item for Vision Sonora Committee reports, and I believe there's none. Item L is communications, and there are none. Item M is council member and department head reports. We'll start from back with Administrative Services Director, Mr. Gorski. Okay, Community Development Director, Ms. Keller. Police Chief, Mr. Rendgill.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. And Fire Chief, Ms. Newt. Just coming up to the podium.
I'll just be really quick. I wanted to remind the public, today, all burning was suspended, so we are now in official fire season, and there's no more open burning allowed. So, just want to remind everybody that.
Our esteemed counselor, Mr. White. Nothing left? Okay, our esteemed administrator, Mr. Miller.
No, nothing further, thank you.
We'll go to Mr., our mayor pro temp, Mr. Hawkins.
I just want to thank the rest of the council members that have reached out. My mother's still in hospital, so I could not make the Economic Development Authority meeting that day. Had to take off to Fresno, so I do appreciate that. Luckily, we were able to come back. And then Sunday had a great Father's Day. I believe every day is Father's Day, and always teach and train kids, you know, something. So, got a message from one of our constituents about six-thirty, six-forty-five, Sunday morning, and letting us know about some weeds that were on West Church Street. So, took the kids out and, you know, teaching them about cleaning up their community and taking care of their neighborhoods and that sort of thing. And it's really cool because I'm finding that my children now are picking up trash, just walking along, pick up a piece of trash, put it in the garbage can, being responsible when it comes to recycling, things like that. So, it's just, it was a really, really good day, and of course, my wonderful wife got me to go to the lake where we had my spitting.
Councilmember Plummer?
PG and E had a public outreach last week and a half ago about their plan to mitigate unexpected fires by shutting down the power. And I... It occurred to me that I don't know what the city plan is on how to deal with it if we have no power for two, three days, maybe a week because of high fire danger. I'm certain there is one, but I'm kind of asking her, "I'll come talk to you."
We all lock the doors and go home. We have generators at our critical facilities.
Certainly, we did for fire, police.
We do not here. So, that would mean we need to set up an operations center, probably at the fire station.
That's going to be very good. Make it for an interest in some of it, perhaps.
We'll manage.
That's it. Okay. Councilmember Satch?
The fifth, I went to the US Partnership Executive Committee meeting. On the sixth, I went on a team tour of Pine Grass Lines, Sierra Village, and Phoenix Lake Water Storage Facilities. It was an all-day tour, and it was great fun, great, great fun. On the twelfth, I went to TC... I attended TCTC just as a member of the public. On the thirteenth, I went to the US Partnership Meeting, not executive. And on the fourteenth, I tried to go to the TCTC. And on the fourteenth, I tried to go to the TCEDA board meeting, but they did not have a quorum, so I have to go back.
And as for me, we went to the TCTC meeting on, on the twelfth, and went to the aforementioned quorumless EDA meeting on the fourteenth. Wasn't able to get to the Government Affairs meeting this morning, unfortunately, because of work.
There's only one of them.
That's right. I have in my, I still have in my book, as my, my thing is twice a month, so.
Good thing you didn't.
Good, good thing I didn't. And I believe that is it for me, and with that, I will adjourn to me.